I'd like to call to order the Township of North Huntington Board of Commissioners Special Meeting for Thursday, March 14th at 7:00 PM. Roll call Manager Silka.
Commissioner Hagis.
Here.
Commissioner Harold.
Here.
Commissioner Bertani.
Here.
Commissioner Martino.
Here.
Commissioner Cassara.
Here.
Could everyone please stand and rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thanks Jeff. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, if I may add, Commissioner Blasco is present also.
Okay. If any residents would like to speak tonight, they could sign the book at the podium. The first resident is Dietrich Peverado.
Peverado.
Peverado, sorry. Just name and address for the record, please. You can come up to the podium.
2316 Lindell Court, North Huntington, 15642. Just go ahead. Sorry. Okay. I'd like to introduce myself. I am Dietrich Peverado. I am a North Huntington resident. I'm here to state my concerns regarding the houses in our single-family zoned neighborhoods that are currently being used as hotels, boarding, rooming, houses. I have here with me tonight several neighbors who also share my concern. A little history that's led to this concern, recently in our neighborhood, Knights Landing, a five-bedroom house was sold to a gentleman that never occupied the house. He did a lot of renovations on the house. He rented the house out to a man who owns a construction company, who was housing 10-plus of his workers on a three-month lease. After zoning, was made aware of the violation to our single-family zoned neighborhood, the number of occupants went down from two eight and then to seven. The property owner was not returning phone calls or responding to any letters from the zoning department. The lessee, which was the construction company's owner, claimed that they were a single family. Now, North Huntington is growing fast, we all know that. And with growth also comes the challenge to the zoning of our neighborhoods. There will be those who will try to circumvent the present ordinances, and it's for this reason that we need North Huntington to be proactive, to make sure that our ordinance protect not only the residents of North Huntington, but also North Huntington Township as a whole. This is a nice place to live. That's why people come here. A lot of people move here because it's nice. What makes it nice is that we enjoy a quiet, safe, low-density neighborhoods that are well-maintained to reside and raise our families. There's a known factor to these stable environments, and that's why they are safe. We all know our neighbors. This is the intention of the single-family zoned neighborhoods. The ordinance are designed for our protection, to preserve this. We, as property owners, have a considerable financial as well as community investment in our neighborhoods, and as a result, our property values continue to increase and North Huntington continues to flourish. By allowing our houses to be used as hotels and boarding and rooming houses, we diminish the very thing that makes our neighborhood so attractive and adds value to our properties. Transient-type housing such as boarding and rooming houses increases the number of people that have no investment in the property or community. It compromises the safety and the integrity of our neighborhoods and opens the door to future problems. There are several things that I would like to see happen as a result of this request. The definitions of single-family and commercial boarding homes need to be further defined. There can be no question as to how the property is intended to be used and is actually being used. Also enforcement steps need to be in place to verify who's actually living there and that they actually meet the requirements. In regard to rentals, we need to establish in North Huntington a way to handle the increasing number of rentals in the township. Currently, I am not aware that we have anything in place in North Huntington that has any type of registration for these rental, these houses that are being rented out. We have no way to handle the increasing number in the township, so you do just a basic any search on the internet and you'll come up with a plethora of reasons of why you need to regulate your rentals. It's been a proven problem in other towns in respect to property damage, safety, and use of public resources. All these things result in an increasing cost to the township. Also, it allows the property owner to be unreachable, which would appear to be their intent. In closing, Article II of the zoning ordinances state, and I'll quote, I'll just read it, "The purpose of our ordinances is to promote and protect the public health, safety, and welfare of its inhabitants, of the North Huntington Township and the public in general. It's also to encourage and facilitate orderly growth and expansion of the municipality and to protect the character and maintain the stability of residential, business, and manufacturing areas within the township." It's our hope that the commissioners who work on our behalf will exercise due diligence in addressing our concerns and protecting our single-family zoned neighborhoods through revision of our ordinances, they need to be reviewed, and set up a monitoring system of the rentals in our township. You need to know who's coming here. You need to know how to find the property owners. You need to make sure there's inspections on the property. If you want to continue in the direction which is a positive direction of North Huntington, you have to be proactive. This is the time to do it. I came from Monroeville, grew up in Monroeville, and this happened right across the street from me, which is why I'm interested in this so passionately. I watched the house across the street from me turn into a boarding house, which eventually became a drug house, which was in disrepair, cars coming and going, and I mean, that's a whole nother thing I could talk to you about. So I speak from experience, not fear. I know what's coming down the road. We are in a unique position right now. It's a cautionary tale, what happened in my neighborhood, which I would never thought had happened in my neighborhood, Knights Landing. Possibly happening already in other places, just nobody spoke up. Well, I'm speaking up to my council, to my commissioners, and asking for your help. Thank you for your time, consideration, and I'll take any questions if you have any questions.
Now, the way citizens' input works, we will respond after all citizens come up and are able to speak.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm here for you.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks.
Next resident is Angela Schlegel.
Schlegel.
Schlegel?
Good evening. My name is Angela Schlegel. I am a resident of Lindell Court as well. I also have experience, and that's why this situation concerns me. We moved here about five years ago, a little over five years ago actually, from Penn Hills. December of 2011, I went down the street to pick up candy from a neighborhood child. I knocked on the door and found a mattress in the living room on the floor. At that point in time, I realized my neighborhood had officially changed. After talking with some of the neighbors, we realized that there are multiple families living in that house to get a better education for their children. They were living there illegally. I didn't escalate my concerns at that time to the township. I didn't try to change the situation, and I did nothing to protect my neighbors. I moved. I thought I was making a move to a better place and making a substantial long-term investment in a very stable neighborhood, and as Dietrich Peverado spoke, you know, we learned that there were 10 to 12 grown men living in a house down the street from us. I want to feel safe on my street and not feel like I'm living down the road from a red roof or in extended stay suites. One of the neighbors did a ton of legwork and brought the attention of the situation to the attention of the township zoning people. As a result of her dedication and the follow-up by the township, my understanding is we're down to about seven or eight men in that house now, so I do appreciate that improvement. But I want to voice my concern as the citizen of North Huntington and make a few points and suggestions. I don't know what the processes and procedures are in place to govern and oversee rental arrangements in the township, but it appears there's a lack of transparency and visibility into who is renting their property and to whom they're renting their property. Based on my observations, there also appears to be no proactive process in place to ensure that renters are in compliance with those zoning regulations. And I don't know anything about residency requirements since they relate to income tax collection, but I hope that a repercussion of the lack of visibility didn't result in a lack of income and tax revenue for the township as a result of these 10, 12, 10 to 12 wage owners living in that residence. So, in closing, I ask that you help protect North Huntington. Obviously, I suggest that a review of associated policies and procedures be completed to ensure that we're keeping up with the times and the situations that are arising and appropriately addressing topics related to rental visibility, notification, local wage tax, single-family dwelling zoning rules, regulations, proof of that zoning adherence, and any other related concerns. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. I guess, Andy, could you shed some light on any of this?
I can. Jeff may be able to add some as well. Indeed, Knights Landing is a residential zoning district. I believe it's R3. And anything other than single-family homes is not permitted in an R3 zoning district. Our zoning ordinance defines a family as a single person occupying a dwelling unit, two or more persons related by blood or marriage occupying a dwelling unit, or not more than four unrelated persons occupying a dwelling unit and living together and maintaining a common household. I understand that this situation took care of itself today, that they have moved out. Is that correct?
They have moved out today. The house is back on the market. However, the mayor...
If you don't mind, you want to come up to the podium? Thank you.
They did, in fact, leave today. I saw them leaving. He had said that his project was over. I do know that the house this weekend was put back on the market. The whole time that the owner has had this, even while it was being rented out, the sign remained in the yard, even though if you went online, it was off-market. I do know from some people that I talked to in Monroeville, in a house, this gentleman that bought the house, he also has done the exact same thing that he's doing in Knights Landing in Monroeville. So, the fact that this single-family definition isn't clear, this man who is housing his work crew was able to stay under there because he said that he, it was him, the construction owner, company owner, his two sons, and a son-in-law, and three workers. They were there for work. He was housing them there for $5,500 a month, I was told. It's cheaper to do that, for them to do that, than an extended stay, I believe is why he did it. It doesn't really matter why he was there. I have appealed the zoning decision that they fit the single-family definition because clearly, they do not. They circumvented the terminology. The terminology lists A, B, or C. So you can't be A, a sole person, and B, married and related. So, I feel, and this is probably going too far because I have an appeal that's going to be scheduled, I feel it's pretty transparent and pretty obvious with the relationship. This was a commercial relationship. He was boarding his workers. This was not a familial relationship, and that's why it concerns me that they were able to do this. And now I paid $300 to have an appeal scheduled for April.
Going forward, I think the question is, do we want to regulate rental properties? We had discussed this when John Shepherd was here. I believe it was North for Sales had passed a rental property ordinance, and the argument is twofold from a municipality standpoint. Certainly, the most obvious reason is from a health and safety standpoint. You want to make sure that with rental properties, there's a smoke detector, there's a fire extinguisher, there's adequate exits and means of ingress and egress should there be a fire or an emergency in a home. You want to make sure that rooms that are being used as bedrooms in fact meet the building code requirements for a bedroom with a way out and a large enough window that somebody can get through. We require an occupancy permit currently at the conclusion of construction of a new home, but we never look at it again. Other municipalities have taken this on and said they do want to look at it every time a tenant changes, and certainly the first step for that is knowing what properties are rental properties versus what are owner-occupied. The other argument, and depending on which side you're coming from, you could argue this is more important or less important, but I rented an apartment many years ago in a neighboring municipality. Within 10 days, 20 days of occupying a rental unit there, you had to register with the municipality. I think their objective was to make sure they got your earned income tax. That's a valid reason, too. But those are certainly things that we may want to consider. They have been discussed internally, and the decision was made by Manager Shepherd not to pursue this. It would involve a lot of staff time. I'm not saying that's a bad thing. If there's a fee structure to recoup some type of fee every time there's a change in tenants and a premises is inspected, it may pay for itself, but I don't think you're going to do this without adding a significant amount of man-hours. I'm not saying it shouldn't be done, just realize that going in. But we could certainly do some research and find out what other municipalities around us have done, what their experience has been. Has it been a good thing, a bad thing? Has it improved conditions and prevented problems? That's the board's call.
Do you have anything to add?
We really don't have that much to add, other than you have to watch when you go, when you try to paint with a broad brush, especially the definition of rentals. Probably the one thing for this area that's holding it back is its lack of rental housing, its lack of housing options. Even if you look at the downtown Pittsburgh market, the real estate market over the last five years have been building high-end rental units. So that's, you know, you have to watch that not, you know, I'm speaking as somebody who chooses the lease rather than the own, is that, you know, if you paint a broad brush, you get yourself backed into corners with fair housing violations and some other issues. You know, also, you know, I will say that, somebody who's written two rental ordinances in my career, probably about 200 hours of staff time put into those, never to be passed because of the pushback and because of the political ramifications. It can be done. It cannot be done with our current staffing. There's no way we can effectively administer a rental registration, rental inspection ordinance with our current staff structures. So that, and there's no ways that the fees generated would be able to offset probably a full-time inspector and a part-time clerical. So that's, there's issues. You know, is the ordinance, is the language in our ordinance currently vague? Yes. You know, how do you count? We've had countless arguments internally, how do you count when they violate the fourth unrelated person? So there is, you know, some enforcement areas that would be done, but you know, if the board wants to go down the rental ordinance registration path, I would, you know, urge caution because it's not a fix-all, it's not a, you know, it's not easy, and at the same time, it's not, I don't think, a major problem within the, you know, within the township. There's some local issues, and if it's local, it's definitely an issue for those people. However, I think, you know, as we take a look at the definitions, take a look at the code, and take a look at our enforcement, how we enforce those, especially when we know of active violations, you know, we can tighten our belts a little bit on that area.
Yeah, I agree. We need to be a little bit more proactive than reactive, but maybe, again, looking at the definition, as we're saying, for single-family dwellings, and maybe cutting that number from four to threes, again, something to discuss. And Dietrich and Angela, when you said that they listed the house, they listed as like a for sale by owner, as an MLS listing, is it rented?
Rented.
Okay, so they're looking to sell the entire property and not just rent out the property?
Right. It's back on the market.
Okay. Thank you.
At that house, did all these people have vehicles?
Initially, there were four vehicles, and after it went down to seven, eight, then they just had the two trucks, and then they always had a detached trailer also in the driveway, a large detached trailer.
Did you happen to get any license plate numbers and possibly see where they're from? I mean, see if they're local or see if they're...
They're out of state.
Out of state?
Mm-hmm. They are out of state, if I remember correctly. California, Louisiana, Arizona.
Well, I don't know how you can believe that they are related without actually having some kind of documentation, you know? So, how do you know that they are in this house legally then? Because without any kind of documentation, how do you even know that? They can say, "We're related, we're in-laws," whatever, but to do that, you know, we would have to have some kind of documentation. But I do believe that we should be proactive on this because across our state, we see this in Redding, in Scranton. I mean, in Scranton, Lou Barletta was the mayor of Scranton, and he tried to do something about it. They had up to 20, 25 people living in one rental property. You can't do that. The town became so dangerous that his residents couldn't go out on the streets. Right. So I believe that we really should be proactive. If we have to look at our policies and procedures and do something before something happens, I think it's worthwhile.
Thank you.
Dietrich, were any of the vehicles that were there, were they your standard Chevy-Dodge Ford kind of trucks? Were we had like commercial construction vehicles? We had residents in, speaking about oversized vehicles that aren't supposed to be parked in residential areas?
They were large, what's the definition? Extended cab trucks, SUV, and a car.
And I believe, Chief Rizzo, there have been no police calls or anything, security? Okay.
I actually had, during the complaint process, I ran that property. There's been no police activity there for, since 2016 when there was a minor domestic.
The problem, if I may speak, the problem is that these people come and go. It's a revolving door, so you don't know what's coming next, and you don't know what the next, oh, sorry.
So the people that are in that house are very transient people?
They are.
And they're not always the same people?
Well, that's what I'm afraid of. This just came to our attention in January. So they left today. They were supposed to be out March 1st, and then they came up to the zoning and asked for and told them that they extended, had to extend their lease, or they extended their lease two more weeks. And they were not fined because they fit under the family, single-family definition for the reason I just told you. Tom checked their IDs. Six out of the seven showed up, and I personally don't, three of them had the same, I guess, name. I don't know who the fourth person, I don't know who these people are. I filed a right-to-know, which I was told is going to be delayed for further information because I was concerned about the public safety of our neighborhoods with these people who we don't know. You know, the gentleman who bought the house, if he would have just moved into the house like everybody else does, or even if he rented, because leasing, you're allowed to lease, but to a single family. If a single family would have showed up that was leasing the house, we would know these people. I went through two, a couple dozen chocolate chip cookie batches waiting for this guy to show up to welcome him to the neighborhood. So, he never, he never moved in, and with these particular people that were in there now, we were fortunate. We don't know who else is going to be showing up. If the house doesn't sell and it's rented out again, it's Pandora's Box.
I think it's great that you can all band together to come here tonight, you know? We don't want that, or any place like that, to turn into a drug house or anything that's going to, you know...
You don't. Trust me.
...devalue our township, so there's enough problems out there we don't need to create, and we need to be proactive for sure. Bruce, you have any input on this?
Well, I, I think that we've addressed it pretty well. I think I'm hearing that this board wants to take a look at our zoning ordinance and look at the definitions. I think there's some caveats in that there might be a lot of time that has to be expended. Sometimes you just need citizens to watch out, like this has happened tonight. I've had this situation in other communities, and oftentimes, once the community becomes aware of a problem, they bring it to the board's attention, those tenants move out. I'll be honest with you, this, I've been here more than two weeks. I've been here since 2001 or two. First time I've heard this issue. That doesn't mean it wasn't going on or isn't going on. So I think that, I don't want to, I don't want to appear to be, you know, the sky is falling. I don't think the sky is falling, but again, it's one of these things we should stay proactive on. We should take a look at the zoning ordinance, and let's see what we can do to maybe tighten it up a little bit in this area, and still not put in the man-hours that are necessary to do the inspections. As Andy put it perfectly, I mean, you can generate fees from this to pay for the inspections and those kinds of things, and it is a way to catch people that try to avoid earned income tax. But again, it's a lot of policing, it's time-consuming, and you just have to be willing to say, "Okay, we're going to hire a couple people," and then they've got to generate the revenues, i.e., do the inspections when it comes appropriate to do so. Overall, let's go back and take another look at the zoning ordinance and see where we can go.
Any other further board comments on citizens' input on this topic?
Yeah, I just wanted to question, Rizzo, Chief, can we have some extra patrols up there to check it out and everything, just on, you know, a regular basis?
No, that's absolutely not wrong.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Dietrich. Thank you for coming.
I guess if the staff could just look into the ordinance and maybe come back with some ideas to the board. All right. It's the end of citizens' response. Work session discussion topics, Manager Silka?
Okay, I just have a few today. First, I just wanted to give the board an update on the Act 172 Public Safety Tax Credit progress. As of February 15th, when it was a deadline for all the eight departments eligible to certify their compliance or their membership, six out of the eight entities did certify and their members are eligible to receive the tax credit for 2018 real estate taxes and earned income tax. The two that aren't are Hartford Heights and Shafton. The process, and this is something, you know, it's, it was written by bureaucrats and we're trying to, you know, stumble through this. The first part is that the fire departments, through their chief, certify all of their roster who've met the training requirements for the resolution. That's turned into my office, and then individual members of those eligible departments have up until April 1st to turn in an individual certification form that they fill out, turn in to their chief to certify, then turn in. Then April 1st is the deadline for that submission. After I get that list, I will bring it to the April meeting to the Board of Commissioners to certify that list eligible for tax credits, at which time I will then issue a Act 172 Compliance Certificate. Then after those eligible members who were certified by... Then after those eligible members who were certified by the Board of Commissioners pay their, pay their real estate taxes in full, they can then come with that certificate and a receipt from the tax collector and ID to show that they are primary, that's their primary residence, and that they meet the criteria, and then I will, you know, issue a refund of the 20% of the real estate tax that was paid. And then whenever they file for, after they file for their earned income tax, they will be able to do the same thing for their earned income tax filing with a tax certificate and, you know, and the ID shows that they're, and the tax certificate, you have to show residency as a primary residence, you have to show that you live within the township, so children can, you know, and other people who live with, with eligible firefighters. So, that's where we are, and we're coming through, so at the April meeting, I'll bring that list for your certification. And I, I want to thank the chiefs and the individual firefighters for, you know, stumbling through this process with us. It's, it's our first time, it's easy to write an ordinance in a process, it's, sometimes it's harder to administer. So, everybody was cooperative and did what they needed to do. Okay, if no other question on that? I have, I received last week a request from the Borough of Irwin to offer reciprocity for North Huntington residents who volunteer in, at the Irwin Volunteer Fire Department, and then for Irwin residents who volunteer for North Huntington to have the same Act 172 tax rebate. And that came to me kind of as a surprise, the Borough of Irwin did not make any contact with me prior to writing their ordinance and prior to putting that language into the resolution that they passed. We had no discussions with them prior, so it, I actually, like, I got notified by a reporter who called me, asked me, you know, how we're doing this, and I said, "Well, I don't know." So, then their manager did forward me the documents. And as I put in there, there's currently 16 North Huntington residents who volunteered at Irwin. And, you know, reciprocity is something that can't be done with the Act, you know, as I wrote in the memo, you know, the Act was designed to get community involvement within the local municipalities. So, it would be a board decision whether they want to grant the benefit to, to the residents of North Huntington who serve outside of the township. And, you know, I did write, you know, in my memo that, to me, unless there's a volunteer fire company who's not accepting new members, that seems to be a benefit to be extended that would not benefit the township to give up that tax money.
Yeah, I understand there is some tax dollars to be lost, but, and I'm sure there's members on the board here that can speak more of the brotherhood of the fire department. I think the possibility is grandfathering these residents into the program. You know, it's maybe a convenience factor, I'm looking at some of the addresses, some of these people live hundreds of yards from the Irwin Borough Fire Department compared to several miles from the North Huntington Township. So, it's a big brother, little brother, community system. I, I don't think that it's a loss, these citizens are donating their time. It's, it's teamwork that's going on between Irwin Borough and North Huntington Township. So, I would, if the least, grandfather these residents into this program rather than shut them off and say, "Well, we appreciate your service, but thanks."
So, just to expound on that, so somebody, I, well, obviously, I know some of the guys that are on, on the list there. And usually what ends up happening is, they usually start out as Irwin firemen because they're in the borough, and as they grow older and start families, they move outside the borough, but they stay with that fire department. And for me, for instance, I, I grew up in the circulable area, but I now live in Fairmont-Hontown District, but I'm still a circulable fireman. So, still within the township, but it's still basically the same, the same, it's the same deal. So, the only thing I would say, if, if we do decide to do this, and I can't remember what are the requirements are on our end, but are they the exact same requirements that are in Irwin's?
What I was suggesting, when we write our resolution, that we mandate that it makes, that it makes, I'm pretty sure they're real, but we make them mandated to our, our process.
Yeah, absolutely. It's got, for me to say okey-dokey with it, it's got to be the exact same.
And also, this would not become effective until 2020 because they've already missed the deadline for 2018.
Yeah, I, I agree with Darryl, it should meet our requirements the same, and I don't want to, I'll go along with Brian also, I think that they should get involved in it, even though they don't live in the township, whatever, or they live in the township, but I don't think we should not pay them or give them the opportunity to do that, to get the refund, okay? But they need to meet the requirements the chiefs have come up with. So, probably on top of that, the chiefs need to talk, whoever the, in charge of the chiefs this year should talk to the Irwin chief and say, "Here's our requirements, you guys need to meet these requirements in order to work." So, I'm not sure who's in charge here.
So, and this could go the other way too, I don't know if, there may be Irwin residents or actually township firefighters. So, like, I know, pretty sure we have a guy who lives in North Irwin, it's one of our firefighters.
You are correct.
Yeah, so...
And I know our, our purpose is to get these individuals to volunteer within North Huntington Township, but humans are creatures of habits, and it's really hard to say, "Hey, leave your family and go to another family if you want this benefit." I just don't think it's fair to those individuals who sacrifice a lot of their time and, you know, their day without having their families around them, so I think it's a good faith effort by the township.
I guess I'd somewhat disagree, I mean, I agree with all the board members saying that, you know, it's a good faith effort to try to, you know, extend the arm, and obviously, they volunteer their time, but looking down on some of these numbers, there's a few other departments that have a, I want to say overabundance, but a large amount of members that qualify. But looking down the list, there's, obviously, we don't know about two of the departments that didn't turn their numbers in yet, but there's at least probably two or three on here that could probably use some of those members that actually to serve North Huntington Township. I mean, maybe there's some of those stations are a little bit further away from them, but to my opinion, I think we should just do it for North Huntington residents, if it's the board's pleasure to go ahead and extend that to Irwin. I'm okay with that, but I would like to see it just for service at North Huntington Fire Departments. Like I said, I don't know all the membership of all the departments, but I know some have overabundance of members versus some that maybe lack membership, so maybe that would entice some of those people to join up at some of those other departments.
I don't know that would really be enticing for them to move. I think regardless of the benefits, those people love what they do, they're going to volunteer with that department, they're not going to leave for the $200 that they might save, but I think it's really hard to say, go to a different house, it's, it's not the same.
I think everybody needs members, whether it's Irwin or North Huntington, we all, excuse me, all the fire companies need members, so I think, you know, it's a good thing that, you know, we can do that and work with Irwin on that with their firemen, their first responders, and they're helping save lives.
As I see working sentences to go through this, there's just one clarification Commissioner Blasko brought up, do you want a grandfather clause in there that it's these members, and then going forward, no new members? Or do you want it, you know, so when I do the resolution for the meeting?
I'd like to see it grandfathered, I don't know if there's any junior firefighters that would then fall into that, that would have to look into that, or it's just current active members that would then qualify. But, I mean, 16 residents is going to break the bank for us. Again, they're going to respond to mutual calls if we have emergencies in the township, so...
I guess I would be in favor, if it's the board's pleasure, just do it, the current ones and not any new ones.
Okay, I just have one issue before we go into the culvert issue that came up after we sent out the packets, as a culvert issue, probably have a little more discussion. Chief Rizzo received a request from Norwin School District for a donation of our current Impala, it's a 2014 Impala that we've cycled out of service, we have no use for it in the administration fleet or the codes fleet, and we would basically put it up for bidding when we do our bids this year, but they have asked for the donation of that vehicle for their school police officer, and I just bring you the board's decision to see what the board's opinion is.
Jeff, if this vehicle were good at auction, municipal auction, what's the value?
Probably a couple hundred dollars.
Again, I, I don't always agree with the Norwin School District's fiscal policies, but it's a community asset for a lot of our residents, so I, I think it's a good move for the township.
Put it on his motion from the meeting? Okay. And then the final, then the final part of my report, and actually, I'm going to lean on Mr. Blanco on this, is the culvert issue at 99 Balot at Palarino's Car Wash. We had a, a major flooding incident there in September of this year, and it's kind of a reoccurring issue of a, of a clogged pipe, it's a private pipe on private property with a clogged outlet, at least a clogged outlet, there may be more as you go upstream the pipe. But what I'm going to ask is, if Mr. Blanco can kind of take the wheel here and drive us through here.
Manager Salka provided you with some old correspondence, which I had in my file, going from the fall of 2010 through December of 2011. And reading through all of that in preparation for this meeting, it tells a whole story about how we learned about this and what we learned about it, and the landowner's response to our violation notice. There is a culvert, which is 1,250 feet long, it is made of four-foot diameter reinforced concrete pipe, and it runs from behind Jacktown Plaza. In fact, my paper file in my file cabinet, I've always called it Joey O's Culvert, that's where Joey O's was, and that was the upstream end. And it discharges down Portal Lane at Cooper Trading. So, with that length, it's a quarter mile long. It's significant. How that culvert came to be, I have to guess because I wasn't alive at the time it was installed, but Route 30 was built in its present alignment around 1937, 1938. Somebody who owned the property where Jacktown Plaza and Norwin Motors and Palarino's Car Wash said, "Wow, I've now got highway frontage, if I could just do something with that pesky stream." So, somebody made the decision, whether it was all one landowner or whether it was multiple landowners, to enclose that stream into a four-foot diameter pipe. This is an aerial photograph from May 24th, 1939, I believe, I'm having a little hard time reading the text in the bottom corner, but you can see that there's raw earth out of the right-of-way of Route 30. And if you look real hard, right above that tree line, you can see a meandering dark line running between the trees and Route 30, that's the stream. And yet, you can see disturbed earth on both sides of it. I believe at that point, somebody was getting ready to enclose that stream and make it usable property along the highway. This culvert starts in a depression behind Jacktown Plaza. Upstream of that, there's a pipe that carries the same stream underneath Enterprise Rent-a-Car, and then it daylights for a couple of hundred feet, and then it goes back into a pipe which carries it underneath six different properties and Balot Avenue. That yellow circle shows the upstream end of the pipe. On a dry day, when you look down into that depression, it looks like that, it looks like a field, it's not mowed, it's not cut, there's a lot of vegetation and brush down there, but when we get a major storm, it fills up. This was first brought to our attention by Bob Hume, who built Jacktown Plaza. He called us up back in 2009 and said, "There's something wrong after a major storm, I'm getting a backup of water down here." So, we went down there multiple times, we took photos, we documented it, we kept trying to inspect that pipe from the upstream end. We walked into it, Keith Evers and I, several times, it seems like every time we got in there to try to document conditions, eventually our lights would die and would have to abandon our inspection and come back out. What we didn't realize, and we should've, is you needed to come up from the downstream end. And eventually, when we were GPSing all of the storm sewers in the township in 2009, we GPS'd the downstream end, and we looked up the pipe and said, "Oh, my gosh, now we see what the problem is." The downstream end, as I mentioned, comes out at Cooper Trading, where I have the yellow circle on this diagram, and then it continues down through their property and eventually tinkers run. If you look up from the downstream end, you will see, let me get you a date on this photo. There we go. This photo was taken on September 15th of 2010, and it was that day that I sent a letter to Joseph Iezzi, who was the agent for Mark Land's company that owns the bus garage. And what you can see here is that the reinforced concrete pipe is actually separated, and there's a, a pretty good gap between sections of pipe there, into which soil from above that pipe has fallen. So, there's been kind of a, a subsidence issue on the surface, and if you go out there now, you will see a depression where all that soil has fallen into the pipe and either blocked it or been washed away. What we're seeing here, towards the left of the pipe, is the water trying to get around all that dirt and soil that's, that's fallen through that joint into the pipe. Eventually, Mr. Iezzi did hire a pipe inspection company, and they tried to run a camera up that pipe from the downstream end. They gone into it 41 feet when that camera was scraping on the top of the pipe, and they couldn't go any further. But as you can see looking into the pipe, it continues to fill up beyond that. So, at some point, the pipe was significantly blocked off. In the winter of 2010 into 2011, we got a call one day from Pete Cooper at Cooper Trading, and he said, "I've got something wrong down here, can you come down?" So, I went down, and we saw a river of water running down his driveway, coming out of a hole in the ground. I thought it was a water main break because you can see there's a water shut-off valve right there, and I thought, "Well, that's his service coming off of the main, there's a water main there that's failed." We immediately called the water company, they came out, they turned some valves, they listened, and they said, "That, that isn't our pipe, that can't be." They said, "We do have a pipe there, but we do not believe our pipe is leaking." So, we scratched our heads and tried to figure out where, where it's coming from and why all this damage. What we didn't realize was that, let me not go to that picture yet, what was happening, that hole in the ground was a storm inlet that perhaps Pendott put in, perhaps Cooper Trading put in years ago, that drained into this four-foot diameter pipe. The water that couldn't get out of the four-foot diameter pipe was flowing backwards up to this storm inlet and coming out and then running down the driveway. So, the, the water was, there was enough head behind it, it was backed up enough up at the upstream end of the culvert, that the elevations were the same, and it found its escape route by flowing backwards up this 15-inch pipe and then flowing down Mr. Cooper's driveway. I showed the 48-inch culvert there, and I showed the 15-inch pipe that fed into it. So, once the water flowed backwards and was coming up and out of that inlet, it followed that red hand-drawn line on there right above Portal Lane and was washing out the driveway. It got worse after a storm, it subsided a little bit when it was dry, but it flowed 24/7 as the stream does. So, Mr. Iezzi hired Ligonier Construction, who built a bypass line, if you will, and that was this 24-inch pipe that I'm showing in yellow that picked up the flow from the 15-inch pipe and safely carried it in a 24-inch pipe down to about the same location where that 48-inch culvert originally ended. That was great as a temporary stopgap measure, but you can't put the flow that should go through a 48-inch pipe through a 15-inch pipe. That's where the downstream end of that 24-inch pipe dumps out and flows into the original stream channel and continues down through Cooper's Trading property. The original 48-inch pipe, Manager Salka and I looked at it here last Thursday, you can just see the top of that pipe. For the most part, that pipe is, is occluded and blocked off. As you saw in my correspondence, I had some back and forth with Mr. Iezzi, and he said, "There's nothing wrong with what we've done, there's no problem, everything's flowing great, the water's making it through, the 15-inch pipe works just fine." If you look at the math, which us engineers like to do, the cross-sectional area of a 48-inch pipe is 1,809 square inches. is 1,809 square inches. The cross-sectional area of a 15-inch pipe is less than 10% of that. So, that 15-inch pipe through which all water has to flow even to get to that 24-inch pipe, it's kind of like saying, well, the parkway's five lanes, but the squirrel tunnel's only one. The capacity of the roadway isn't the five lanes. It's the narrowest part, which in this case is this 15-inch pipe. So, my fear at that time, I believe, has been realized. There are tree limbs, tires, logs, shopping cart, leaf, litter, gosh knows what, that flows down through that 48-inch culvert. It was only a matter of time before it got so wedged full of the debris that was not going to turn a 90-degree bend and go up a 15-inch pipe to be discharged, that it was going to clog itself off. There's 243 acres upstream of this, so it's a fairly significant watershed, a little less than four tenths of a square mile. I know we looked at this in early 2011 from the upstream end, and there was standing water 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, I think what's happened between 2011 and now is that this entire culvert is probably packed full of debris, a quarter mile of debris, and how much, it is still flowing out the 24-inch pipe. We saw it flowing pretty well a week ago, but it's certainly not able to take everything that's coming down that valley. In dry weather, maybe, but not in a storm. Back in September, on September 10, Palarino's Car Wash got the brunt of this. What happened was that the basin behind Jacktown Plaza filled up to the point that it overflowed, and all of that water then came overland through their parking lot, through West Morland Monuments, Norwood Monuments, West Morland Pools, across Ballot Avenue, Norwood Motors, Palarino's Car Wash, and eventually into the creek down by Cooper Trading. That is the scene on September 10. You can see there was easily two feet of water outside of Palarino's Car Wash. It picked up everything that wasn't bolted down and washed it to somewhere else. You can see the extent of the water. It came in through the building. It broke through a garage door. It ruined a lot of appliances and electronics. This was the credit card machine where you could pay for your car wash. That was wiped out, and I think you told us $1,800 for any one of those?
That's $150,000.
Okay. So, you can see there was some significant damage done to Palarino's Car Wash. I have not heard of damage claims from any of the other businesses there, although it's pretty likely that they took on water as well. But the problem isn't going away. We talked about this back in 2011, and I urge the board to go after Mark Lands because the first-class township code has a provision in it that no person shall stop, fill up, confine, pave, or otherwise interfere with any drain ditch, water course, or drainage facilities in a township without first submitting suitable plans thereof to the township commissioners for their approval. Now, certainly, the property owners there, I think, have a civil action against Mark Lands for the blockage of this pipe. I know one of the arguments that was made back in 2011 was that I couldn't prove to you that there weren't other parts of the pipe that were failing, and that's very true. I can't. That pipe may be in horrible shape the whole way up. However, the only way to inspect a pipe once it's blocked is to work from the bottom, remove the blockage, and then inspect the next section upstream of that. At this point, I'm not even sure how you would clean it or inspect it. They had contracted with that pipe cleaning company that did the televising. They looked at the pipe and they said, it's cracked longitudinally. There's no way we're going in there and risking somebody's life to go in and try and remove debris. They were afraid that the thing would just let loose and somebody would end up drowning inside that pipe. But you can see the crack along the top of the pipe, very visible right here, just the first section, this side of the opening of the failed joint there. You can see that crack that runs the length of the pipe at the top. You can also see a crack along the right side and the left side. What happens when that fails, the top cracks in and then the sides cut loose. It's like a hinge. So, as the top starts to subside and the pipe becomes egg-shaped, the next place you see a fracture is on the long, along the sides of the pipe. So, the sad part is that pipe is under maybe 40, 50, 60 feet of fill. It would be an incredible expense to go down and dig that up. Mr. Iezzi had told me back in 2011, push too hard and we'll just file for bankruptcy. All right, but we've got a mess on our hands. There's, that pipe somehow, that stream somehow has to get from the, behind Jacktown Plaza, down to Cooper Trading. There's, it's got to flow downhill. There's no other way to do it. Now, maybe if you were to put a new pipe in, maybe it wouldn't have to be quite as deep, although it would still be significantly deep. If you look at the contours up at Jacktown Plaza, that's easily 25, 30 feet below the parking lot to get down to where that pipe begins, and as the pipe goes downhill, it only gets deeper going further. So, somebody has had the benefit for 60, 65 years of having the use of that property. It was their decision to enclose it. It's not a township pipe. We don't have an easement. There's no evidence that we put the pipe in. Do we want to spend taxpayer dollars trying to go in there and fix it, or is that an expense that should be borne by the landowners? Mr. Iezzi, on behalf of Mark Lands, has said, I'm not going to do anything, even though I know there's a failure under my property. So, I guess that brings us to the decision tree. What do we want to do? It wasn't going to fix itself. I think it was only a matter of time before that pipe became completely choked off. I think we're pretty close to being there.
What we're asking for tonight is if there's more consensus for us to start pursuing the landowner of this pipe, you know, and then work our way up, and, you know, if we can get in, see other landowners, and then, you know, just be a domino effect going up of enforcement. But this, you know, this is one that we don't own. This problem we don't own. You know, we'd like to try to get relief for the property owners upstream to be able to have the water flow down.
Andy, a question for you. Is that concrete pipe all the way? Is that from top to bottom?
It is. It is. At least as far in as we got.
So, you don't know how much is separated or is not separated?
No.
There could be a bunch of that.
Possibly. Although, my guess is that, and you've seen this, so often culverts underneath multiple properties, everybody did their own thing. This guy used corrugated metal. This guy used old water heater tanks. This guy used clay pipe. You name it. It does appear, at least looking from the upstream end and the downstream end, that this was all done at the same time with the same type of pipe. The joint lengths are consistent. The diameter's consistent. It's the same material.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Just to make sure, Bruce, do you have any thoughts on how we proceed?
I just want to make sure that we continue to say that this is a private matter. I have no problem enforcing the first-class township code or any other ordinances that might come into play here, but I don't want us to do anything to, in some fashion, appear to be taking over this line because we're not. This is a private property owner that has a problem that's affecting others. It's become a nuisance, and as such, you know, you can enforce the township code. But I don't want anybody digging up there from our township. I don't want anybody taking any steps to try to remediate the problem from the township standpoint. So, everybody is on notice that we're not doing any of that. We're going to enforce our ordinances as Andy's outlined.
Andy, one other question. Going down to Cooper's Trading, there's a building on the left. Is that taking water, too?
I would not think so.
Used to be, I think, a machine shop. Now, it's an auto-placed repair shop?
I know there were concerns back in 2011 when Mr. Cooper called us, that at that point, they were seeing water from the 15-inch pipe that was discharging at that hole in the ground, which turned out to be an inlet and running down the driveway. Since that 24-inch pipe went in, that's gotten the water away from that building, and you can see it's coming down now to where the original stream channel was. When and if there's another event like happened back in September where the water overflows the basin and starts coming overland, I'm not sure that's the first place it would end up. I think it's more likely to come around behind the car wash, across the parking lot of the bus garage, and come down that way.
Okay, thank you.
Andy, just so I know, when's the last time you talked to this property owner? When's the last time you had correspondence with him?
The last correspondence we had was...
I'm seeing 2010 in here.
Probably around 2011.
Has there been one since?
It's like December of 2011.
Okay, and you said that there was a flooding that took place this past September?
Correct.
Okay, so there's been no given, no notice given to him about that?
No.
So far. Okay, I think that's where you start. I think you, you know, let's get our heads together and put together a writing to him, and then I think, the more I think about this, this may take on the characteristics probably most effectively of possibly seeking an injunction in the court of common pleas, because we're not going to get anywhere in front of the district judge on this. It's too big for him to be able to deal with. He's not going to, he's not going to be able to handle this. I mean, all we can do is fine him a few hundred dollars. You know, what you need is somebody to order him to make the repairs, and that only comes from the court of common pleas. So, that's where I would think the direction would go after we give him notice.
Okay, you and I can work together on how we approach that. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Commander Silka. All right, Andy, you're up again. Mr. Blanco, planning and engineering topics.
This one's easy. We have one item coming from the planning commission tonight. St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton Church used to have a training center, administrative building on an adjacent lot. They have sold that building to Waste Management, and now they would like to build a new building on their original lot adjacent to their parking lot, as you see with the yellow rectangle here. It would be parish offices, could be used for small meetings, small conferences. It's not that big of a building. It's about 3,000 square feet. But they filed for a site plan application. Other than stormwater management and the construction of the building itself, they would not be adding any parking or really changing the land very much. This would be used mostly by staff during the week versus Sunday services where people would be there. At those times, this building probably would not be in use. They want to do an engineered metal building. They told us it would be a dark green color. The bottom three feet would be masonry or fieldstone. And they've submitted a site plan. The biggest thing that the planning commission was concerned about was that the gas line easement along the front of that lot wasn't interfered with by the building, and in fact, the building had to be moved a little bit to get out of it. But the planning commission does recommend approval of this contingent upon stormwater and erosion control plan approval from the Conservation District. They need to get sewage planning approval from DEP. NHTMA would like to see their sewer line design because they're concerned with the depth of it. They would want to enter into it. We would want them to enter into a property stormwater O&amp;M agreement so we can go in and inspect their facilities from time to time. And then there were some engineering review items. They did bring in revised plans this afternoon. I've not had an opportunity to look at them before the meeting tonight, but hopefully that addresses all of those comments. I have requested in my memo that we waive the commercial developers agreement on this because, other than building the building itself, there's no new parking. There's no major earthwork. There's no infrastructure. Literally, they're going to build this building next to the parking lot and put in a sidewalk. So, it seems like more trouble than it's worth to go through and bond a sidewalk. But the building itself will be right adjacent to the lot and everything else is existing.
Any questions for Mr. Blanco? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Not seeing any old business on Jennifer tonight. Any further board comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Seven to zero. Meeting adjourned. 8:08.